...River Committee. That is one committee, and this is the meeting, so welcome, everyone. I am joined by my colleague Tom Labonge, and we have a special guest, our colleague Paul Corretts today. And I would like to call this meeting to order. And, Mr. Labonge, what I'd like to do is take things out of order. I'd like to start with item two, then move to five, one, three, and four.
Okay. Good.
And so, without objection there, what I'd like to do at this time is take item two.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Ms. Becca Doten to the Board of Recreation and Parks Commissioners for the term ending June 30, 2016.
Thank you, Richard. And it's my understanding that that has been pulled, so withdrawn, so I'd like to do is note and file item two, without objection. And having said that, I'd like to then move to item five, please.
Item number five is a Department on Disability report relative to proposed contracts for on-call sign language interpreting, captioning, and video remote interpreting services.
Thank you. And I think we already have Teri Sauer up here from the CAO's office. Ms. Sauer, please.
Noreen Vincent, you're here, the city attorney.
Okay. Oh, yes. Ms. Vincent, please.
Mr. Chairman, we've been asked to write a report on this item. We will be reporting back to your committee at the next regular committee meeting. We are working with the department and the city attorney to address our concerns in some of the technical issues with the contracts, so it's our hope that at the regular meeting on the 27th, we will have a report available for you.
Okay. Because I understand multiple contracts are pending approval, there's a timeline. Are there... So you're aware of modifications?
Correct, yes. There do need to be ratification clauses in some of the contracts, which the city attorney has advised us. There are also some issues in terms of the term of the contract, because it's inconsistent in what was included in the request for proposal. So we will work with the department and the city attorney, and when we come back with a report, we'll address all the items and have a series of recommendations to address our concerns, so that you can move these forward in a timely manner.
Okay, terrific. So our next upcoming regular meeting is one week from today, and you'll be able to put the report together in that amount of time.
By one week.
Yeah, my staff might not be happy, but yes, I'm committing them to doing it.
Yeah, because you want to serve the people, and this is the people who have greater needs than you and I.
Yes, and we will be back here next Monday.
Terrific, terrific. And, Mr. Clerk, are there any comment cards for this item?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then, so, we will continue the item until next week with the instruction that Teri was articulate with, and we'll be looking forward to that report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now, we can go to item one, sir.
Item number one is a communication from the mayor and a communication from the City Ethics Commission relative to the appointment of Mr. Robert Williams to the Commission on Disability for the term ending June 30, 2017.
Terrific, thank you. Mr. Williams, please have a seat.
Thank you very much.
And you bet, and welcome. Welcome to the committee, and congratulations on your appointment from the mayor. Please tell us a little bit about yourself. I read your extensive resume, but please share some of your experience with us.
I'm glad to do so. And first of all, I bring you greetings from Bishop Bruno, who sends you his best, and we're glad to be of service in the life of the city.
He's got the greatest administrative office next to the greatest lake that Mitchell Farrell gets reorganized, so that's a beautiful compound church that you have there.
The Cathedral Center, and I'm a resident of the Great Council District Four, so there we are, even better.
Good, thank you.
Quite fine. I've been with the diocese. I'm in my 29th year of service to the Episcopal Diocese, and as you know, the diocese has several institutions that assist persons living with disabilities. I like to emphasize the word "ability" in the word "disabilities." We all have skills and gifts, and the diocese is very good about supporting those and calling them out. The Hospital of the Good Samaritan, St. Barnabas Senior Center, Hillside's Home for Children, Neighborhood Youth Association, you know the record of the diocese. And personally, I attended the retreat meeting of the commission recently, and I was very impressed with Stephen and the staff and all they're doing, especially in terms of disaster preparedness, the office of HIV/AIDS, and reaching out to the hearing impaired, the elderly, all of the above, and employment practices. I think that the strategic partnerships that the city seeks to forge with the volunteer and community agencies is a good priority and one that I can be helpful with.
Wonderful. I have just really two main questions, and that is, big picture, global, you look at it from the lens of, you know, with your experience and incoming commissioner, what do you think are the biggest opportunities for the city as a whole?
I believe the biggest opportunity for the city as a whole is to provide all of its residents with hope and with quality of life and with accessible services, so that there's transportation, that there's access at curbside, so that hearing and sight and all of these areas, that we can help people to live as fully as they deserve to live. We have in our Episcopal tradition the saying from the Baptismal Covenant, "We believe in the dignity of every person," and we respect the dignity of every person, and I believe that assisting those who have disabilities is part of that respect for our fellow human beings.
Well said. Interestingly enough, right across from the Episcopal Church of St. Paul's, there at Echo Park Lake, with the recent restoration of the Echo Park Lake, didn't even include installing an ADA ramp that crosses Echo Park Avenue to Laguna, where the church is. That was a secondary step that we took, and we're about to install a traffic signal there as well.
Thank you for that.
That will be pedestrian activated.
Thank you, that's much needed.
Oh, sure, no problem, but it just... Okay, thank you. It just underscores the... When you think that that would be an obvious sort of need in terms of infrastructure improvements, it wasn't necessarily noticed like it should have been. So there's a real opportunity, I think, for all of us to work together on making sure that those sort of gaping holes in the system are filled. So what are... Having said that, what are some of your priorities? What would you...
In terms of priorities, just a word of preamble, two of our bishops live with disabilities, as you know. Bishop Bruno is himself an amputee, which has opened the eyes to the faith community of how a person can get along and move around very well, but still has to watch. Another of our bishops has hearing impairment and wears dual hearing aids, and so we're very conscious at all times about proper amplification, again, this matter of accessibility. And I feel that as priorities, what I can bring to this equation, I also serve as vice president of the Interreligious Council of Southern California. I feel it's not only the Episcopal Church, but it's all of our faith communities working together, raising visibility. I think that I can be of assistance to the department in communication primarily with these various faith groups and building bridges. Already, one of the staff members and I have had a conversation around disaster preparedness, and we know that disaster preparedness is a huge issue, but imagine, as we know, for those who are living with disabilities, it's a double question. Egress, getting out of buildings, these sorts of things, and I'd like to look carefully at that. I also feel that many of the elderly who are living with disabilities, I feel that is an area of priority, and also the homeless mentally ill is an enormous problem, as we know, in our city. And while it's not necessarily a specific grief, as I understand it of the commission, it might be an area where we begin to focus a little more.
Terrific. Well, I think your background and your experience informs you really well for this committee, and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Labonge.
Just ask you to work with the State Department of Disability and get a ZIP code of where the highest propensity of people who are in wheelchairs or whatever, disabledly bound, and then tell Public Works Commissioner Kevin James and others, let's focus where the most need is, not just where the most need is, and then try to go on. And then the other thing, too, which is interesting, and I'm going to mention it to you, as I passed Echo Park Lake this afternoon on my way downtown, I saw that someone made an encampment in the public stairs. I don't think the way the city attorney's office made the agreement with people camping on the street is that permits people from walking up the public stairs, which is something to look at. So anyway, that's on the west side of the lake, but we should talk to this...
We're aware of that encampment.
They should really... It should be there. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Say hi to Bishop Bruno.
I will do so. Thank you so much.
So, since we don't have a quorum, and Mr. Corretts is our guest with just two of us on the committee, we will waive you forward to council as an instruction from the chair, but I want to commend the mayor for your appointment. Thank you, and I just, I think you'll be great on the commission, so thank you, and we'll see you in council.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right, sir, I'd like to now go to item three.
Item number three is motion Corretts-O'Farrell-Bonan relative to requesting the city attorney to prepare and present an ordinance which would prohibit the growth of genetically modified crops within city limits. This item is also referred to the Energy and Environment and the Planning and Land Use Management Committees.
Wonderful. We do have lots of comment cards on this, however, our colleague Paul Corretts is here to speak on this item and then another item, so what I'd like to do is give the floor to Mr. Corretts, because this has long been a passion of his, and I'm just so proud to be a co-introducer of this effort. And so with that, I'll turn the floor over to you, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your leadership on both this and the rodenticide issue that's both before the committee today. I know you and your staff have been working very hard on this, and I appreciate it. Tomorrow, we're celebrating Food Day at City Council, but today, I think we're recognizing Poisons Day here in Arts Parks Committee. As a society, we've gotten too effective at poisoning the things we don't find convenient, like the insects who eat our food crops, or weeds that grow in the fields, or rats, or squirrels in our parks, so that we've inadvertently begun the wholesale systematic poisoning of the creatures that we do like: butterflies, and songbirds, and raptors, owls, falcons, hawks, bobcats, foxes, and most famously, our Griffith Park mountain lion, the P-22. We also end up poisoning farm workers, and children, and pets along the way as well. And most problematic of all, we're poisoning the pollinator that is absolutely essential, perhaps to human life, certainly our entire food system, which are bees. When we poison the creatures most vital to our existence, we're poisoning ourselves. And worse of all, the pesticide industry is now testing robo-bees, so that when they destroy the bees that we have, they'll have a way to try and replace them. If this doesn't define insanity, I'm not quite sure what does. So that's why we're here today. We need to find a better way of doing things. We need to find a better way of raising crops, so that we replenish our soils and oceans rather than stripping them of their life. We need better ways to address our rodents without causing the kind of harm that we're causing. And a year ago this week, amazingly enough, over 90 scientists from the European Network of Scientists for Social and Environmental Responsibility... They have to find a cat to your name and that at some point. ...released a statement saying, "As scientists, physicians, academics, and experts from the disciplines relevant to the scientific, legal, social, and safety assessment aspects of genetically modified organisms, we strongly reject claims by GMO seed developers and some scientists, commentators, and journalists that there is a scientific consensus on GMO safety, and that the debate on the topic is over. We feel compelled to issue this statement because the claimed consensus on GMO safety does not exist." Their individual statements go on to talk about people's allergic reactions to products containing GMOs, the negative impacts of increased pesticide use, the creation of pesticide-resistant superbugs and superweeds, the problems with monocropping, and much, much more, which means the pesticide companies have been conducting an unapproved scientific experiment on us since the early '90s without our consent, simply to sell more pesticides without really guaranteeing the safety of human beings and the environment. Well, I think every scientific experiment needs a control group, and I think that should be us. We want to conduct our own experiment in Los Angeles and make all 503 square miles of Los Angeles a GMO-free growing zone. So let's see what that does for our health, for soil health, for pollinator health, and let's see what it does for economic development. With the recent decline in the amount of farmland across the country, the city and the state have seen the importance of growing and promoting our own local food systems. We recently allowed folks to grow edible plants in our parkways. The L.A. Food Policy Council has been pushing its Healthy Neighborhood Markets Network. Farmer's markets everywhere you look. Councilmember Price, a member of this committee, just introduced a motion to implement a state bill, AB 551, to create urban agriculture incentive zones where property owners can use their land for agricultural purposes and get a tax break. There are other legislation in this same direction as well. And so our urban farmers and our cottage food movement need the protection of a GMO-free zone, a protection from seed drift, which they found recently in several places in the country, particularly Montana and Oregon with GMO wheat. GMO-free zone could potentially create a lucrative grown-in-L.A. brand. And the Seed Library of Los Angeles and our urban farmers brought this issue to me, and I want to close by mentioning their concerns. This is also about seed purity. As we've seen from the Ebola situation, an epidemic can spread like lightning, and the same thing applies to plants. Monocropping like they do with GMO crops is dangerous for the food supply. We need to protect seed diversity, so that if one strain of plants fails, another will sustain us. So as an example, in 1903, we had 307 varieties of sweet corn. By 1983, there were 12. This is the wrong direction for a society that wants to remain resilient and healthy. Now, if you look at the endorsements of this, I think you'll be impressed by the number of endorsers, as well as some of the different groups represented: Communities for a Better Environment, the Latino Diabetes Association, the Community Health Councils, the Sierra Club, Food and Water Watch, several churches, several neighborhood councils, and restaurants and food stores. And lastly, GMO plant varieties are controlled by corporations through patents, wherein farmers are forbidden from saving seeds to grow the next year. For me, urban agriculture is all about the fact that we're all in this together. It's about growing fruit trees and parkways, and incentivizing ways to create urban farms and gardens. Most of all, it's about saving and sharing seeds, creating good, clean, healthy food for everyone, and protecting our bee populations. And so I thank you for your support on this committee and your consideration, and ask you for your no vote.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. And this ordinance will prohibit the growing of genetically modified crops within city limits. It further specifies that the ordinance should prohibit each of the following practices related to the growing of GM crops within city limits: the planting of genetically modified seeds, the sale of GM seeds by vendors, the sale of any seeds that could potentially be contaminated by other GMOs, and the sale of GM fruit trees and plants. And with that, we will start the public comment card section, and we have, yeah, we have lots of comments on this item and item four, so we're going to have to limit them to one minute each, otherwise we'll be having dinner together. So let's just do the one-minute thing, and we're going to start with Gladys Limon will be our first commenter, followed by Heather Hyde. Ms. Limon?
And I have to say, this is a fine group of people, so if we had to have dinner with someone, this would be a group that you wouldn't mind having.
And it would be organic. Yes, please.
Good afternoon, honorable council members. My name is Gladys Limon. I am a staff attorney with Communities for a Better Environment. I'm happy to be before the committee today in strong support of this motion. When we think and talk about the consequences of genetically modified crops, the issues that generally first come to mind are those concerning our ecosystem, such as destruction of biodiversity and the collapse of bee colonies. Those issues are indeed critical to our human survival. The consequences to human health appear to be more nebulous, because there are questions about the immediate effects to our physical health. But as CBE discussed in the letter that we submitted last week, genetically modified crops have a direct and even deadly effect on human health. Contrary to often repeated claims from the agrochemical industry, the crops require vast amounts of dangerous pesticides and herbicides. The group most at risk are farm workers and those who live in communities where GM crops are cultivated, the great majority of whom are Latino and bear a deadly burden. The people of Los Angeles and generally our children are also at risk.
You can wrap up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to make one point. The food that we eat is an important source of exposure to pesticides, such of which... Some of which contain pesticides residue above levels considered safe by the federal government. Parents of small children in Los Angeles should be particularly concerned, since children consume large quantities of fruit and fruit juices which contain pesticide residue. Children consume these foods at levels from 3 to 23,1 times greater than the average adult American. Surface water and groundwater near places where GM crops are cultivated also contain high concentrations of pesticides. In short, we strongly support this motion. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Limon, thank you. And we have Heather Hyde, who will be followed by David King, who will be followed by Rosemary Jenkins.
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Hyde.
I wanted to thank you for your time today, and obviously you know all of the facts after Mr. Corretts had made his statement. But, you know, the fact of the matter is, I don't understand what's happening to this world, what's happening to nature, what's happening to these small communities, people that thrive off of, you know, things happening naturally and evolving naturally. And I fully support farmers' markets when they don't use GMOs, and I'd much rather live in a society and grow up, and eventually, if I have children, you know, provide a world where we're not about mass consumption. Mass consumption, mass building, and just overall, bigger is not always better, faster is not always better. In fact, I feel like people's health and their integrity are ruined by, you know, the process of GMOs and what's happening, and, you know, large corporations, the things that they're doing to this environment, and I feel like so many people could so easily turn a blind eye. I just can't do that, so that's it.
Thank you for being here today, Ms. Hyde. Thank you so much. Mr. King?
Thank you. I couldn't have said the lines from Councilman Corretts any better than myself. He certainly made a lot of good points. These are petitions that have been signed by people in support of this measure, and we have many more signatures as well. I'd also like to point out, one of the things that... One of the big concerns in our 503 square miles of Los Angeles is that corn pollen, or the pollen of GMO plants, will spread freely by wind, and it will spread out to an area up to 25 miles away from the source, and we cannot protect against that. So if we really want to have an urban ag movement, then we have to have control of the GMOs. We can't let that pollen be in our atmosphere around here, and we can't let it cross with our plants, because then they are compromised. Everybody who's growing a private garden is interested in growing GMO-free food, and that's my point.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. And Ms. Jenkins will be followed by Joanne Poyarot, and Finian Makepeace.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Jenkins, Chair of the Northeast Valley Green Alliance. I'm also a regular columnist for City Watch in L.A. Progressive. And back in August, I sent each of you a letter urging you to support this ban on the GMO issues that we're talking about now. Now, specifically, San Fernando Valley gets a Santa Ana winds, and so, as was mentioned earlier, there's that issue dealing with the cross-pollinization problems. We have a lot of people... It's horse territory up in the Solmar area. People are feeding horses, people are feeding their backyard chickens, they're growing home gardens, school gardens. Solmar High School has a wonderful garden that disseminates their... And distributes their crops all over the city, and we have urban gardens as well. We're working on one at Mission College, for instance, and so it's really imperative that we ensure that all these people that are growing these gardens do so with knowing that they're using healthy seeds, et cetera, and distributing the same in terms of fruit and vegetables. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. We have Joanne Poyarot. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for considering this motion. We have collected endorsements from over 61 organizations, a very diverse assortment of organizations, to show that this is not a single-issue motion. Ultimately, this issue is about the seeds. These are home-saved seeds that the GMO-producing companies would like to outlaw. When we look at the future of our food supply, and we look at drought-tolerant crops, these are black-eyed peas from the desert southwest. They are already naturally drought-tolerant. There are generations of traditional plant breeding invested in these seeds, and we have ... Right now, there are studies going on to find drought-tolerant GMO crops. Well, there are 153 varieties of traditionally bred seeds that are in those comparison studies, and the... Scientific magazine Nature says that the GMO is about 10 years from being anywhere close to producing drought-tolerant food.
Great points, thank you. Thank you. And we have Finian Makepeace, who will be followed by Lorna Paisley and Andrew Douglas.
Hi, guys. I'm Finian Makepeace from Kiss the Ground. I just wanted to thank Corretts for covering most of the things that we wanted to cover, so I could be quicker. This is a pile of about over 1,000 signed info cards against or for this motion. I really wanted to touch on the soils. I'm with the group that's about rebuilding soil, and the technologies of GMOs are past. We have technology and science now that can rebuild our soil, and not only are these pesticides and herbicides that are being applied, and the GMOs that are allowing for them to be applied, killing us and many other, giving us sicknesses, but they're killing the very life in our soil. And the life in our soil is the most important thing for us to be able to exist and live bountifully. So we need to rebuild our soil, and with the GMOs, there's no push to rebuilding our soil. They're making our soil worse and worse and worse, which makes GMOs being able to use themselves more. And they want pesticides to be used, because it continues to give them a bigger market. So we are for this motion, thank you. These are all signed for this motion, so.
Terrific.
A technical question, because I listened to what you said. If you had a pile of water there and a bucket, and a pile of dirt here, what would you pick?
I'd probably pick the water for right now.
Sure, I wanted to hear that, because where I heard you said the soil was most important. Water's most important.
It is, but if we don't have soil built, the water just runs off the land and takes all the nutrients with it.
I know, but water.
Yeah, water starts with soil.
Got it.
Without soil, you don't get any water.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Makepeace. Now we have Lorna Paisley.
Hi, and thank you for hearing us. I'm an organic gardener. I put beer out at night to kill slugs and any other bugs that like to drink. During the day, I swat bugs into soap water or smash them with my bare fingers. That's a lot of bother to be organic, and I don't want people in a several-mile radius pollinating my Swiss chard, my beets, my broccoli, my zucchini, or yellow squash or sweet corn with GMOs. And why? Because GMOs have never been proven safe. Some contain BT pesticide in every cell that ruptures the stomach of the insects that eat it. Some are Roundup-ready, main ingredient glyphosate, which makes them tolerant of lots of Roundup. There's a lot of research showing Roundup damages DNA and is linked to lymphoma, brain cancer, and kidney and liver diseases. There's research showing a 99% correlation between Alzheimer's and autism. Roundup is a chelator. It kills by pulling nutrients out of the plant, and it kills beneficial microorganisms which make nutrients available to plants. Roundup has been found in our water, air, and soil, and has even been found in mother's breast milk. So we really do need to keep GMOs and the herbicides associated with them out of L.A.
Thank you, Ms. Paisley.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Andrew Douglas will be followed by Lori Bennett and Sylvia Arroyo.
Thank you, Councilman O'Farrell, and thank you very much, Councilman Labonge and Councilman Corretts, for your attention to this issue. I was born in Topeka, Kansas, in the same hospital... I was born in Topeka, Kansas, in the same hospital as my father. And my mom's side of the family came from Shawnee, Oklahoma, area. And I was raised in Virginia. So as an adult, I lived my entire adult life in California as a grower. So there's a direct link between democracy and sovereignty and the growing of food here. This is not going to be a trend at all. The USDA, from now on, starting in their next agricultural census, nationwide, they're going to incorporate urban agriculture as part of it. They've also established a $70 million startup fund to promote urban agriculture. Governor Brown just established a farm, a fork program for California to get this stuff in lower nutrient deficit areas, get food in their stomachs. And so this is actually fortifying and protecting a lot of legislation that's already occurring. And we don't know what they're going to come up with next. They are the same people that gave us DDT and Agent Orange. Don't forget that.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
Thank you.
Ms. Bennett?
Thank you so much for addressing this and being here today. My name's Lori Bennett. I'm with the Seed Library of Los Angeles. I'm a U.S. military veteran, former firefighter, mother, organic gardener, amongst other things, all of which really rotate around the issue of GMOs and the use of the glyphosate for them. As a veteran, I've been exposed and know people who have been exposed, both themselves and their children, have had birth defects. The problem with this is that, besides what everyone else here has said today, it creates a stress level. The stress for anyone that's a parent, that's a gardener, anyone of responsibility or wisdom, anyone with disabilities, does not want more of a toxic load than they're already exposed to in a big city like Los Angeles. So introducing or allowing for GMO crops and cross-pollination of any sort will then increase the stress level in the city. As a veteran, therapeutic measures for PTSD and a lot of other things, look at the stress level of people. There are gardening projects for veterans, of which I've been involved. And I believe having L.A. be a GMO-free zone will give more optimism, more encouragement in this city, throughout the nation and the world, to pave the way and show how valuable this is as a movement that you are leaders of. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Thank you. Excuse me. And we have, we're going to have Sylvia Arroyo.
Yes.
Followed by Jason, with no last name on the card, and then Penelope McMillan. McMillan, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. As a natural health practitioner and coming from a country where I grew up with just natural food, I can see the big difference what GMOs do on people, especially the immune system is affected, which is the defense of the human body. I have treated so many people in the last 20 years with allergies, weird allergies, that they respond to nothing natural or drugs because the immune system has been very well, terribly damaged. I think that is enough. If your immune system gets affected, that's it. You cannot live a natural life or healthy life. That will be all.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And we have Jason.
I think Councilman Corretz spoke on a lot of the things that I wanted to mention. And also, the previous speaker, David, speaking about that nature GMO seeds or pollen, it doesn't respect any boundaries that man sets up. So that is, that is an issue that we have to be aware of and potentially take some action on, that, you know, it crosses borders regardless. But I just want to voice my support and maintain the integrity of our food system and to protect what we've so far built to date.
Well said. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. And then Penelope McMillan will be followed by Caroline Muniz and Walker Foley.
I also support this, and I have absolutely nothing to add to what Mr. Corretz said. I wish I had a copy of what you, what you wrote so I could read it to all my friends.
I'll bet he'll make it available for you.
Thank you so much.
We will. Thank you. Mr. Muniz, Carol, I'm sorry, Caroline Muniz.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for hearing us today. I am a holistic healthcare practitioner. I am a raw food chef, and I'm a teacher. I work with L.A. USDA. I teach nutrition through after-school program. I am getting prepared to put in a school garden, and I'm very frightened that our crops are going to be contaminated by GMO overflow. And I have to say that I have been teaching for five years now, and every year, there are more and more students with allergies, more and more students with skin conditions, more and more students not being able to focus. And it's really getting frightening. It's like basically the bell goes off and they start walking into walls. It's middle school, so there's a little bit of that that you should expect anyway. But I see it progressing year after year after year. And I see what they're eating, and it's all genetically modified. I also want to bring to attention that we have such a drought right now, and genetically-modified seeds take a lot more water, almost three times the amount of water to grow. And in a time of drought, we really should not be allowing that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And Walker Foley will be followed by Teresa Brady and Bruce Campbell.
Hi there. My name is Walker, and I'm here with Food and Water Watch, and we work to ensure that the food, water, and fish we consume is safe, accessible, and sustainable. And we urge you to support this motion. Los Angeles has made many great strides in allowing urban agriculture, but we believe the security of a budding new urban agriculture industry could be threatened by the cross-contamination of GMO pollen to locally grown non-GMO crops. So by securing Los Angeles' 502 square miles as a GMO-free zone, the city can better protect its urban farms from unintentional contamination. And Los Angeles has done incredible work this year to secure rights for pollinators and the state widely through 551 to secure rights for urban farmers. And, you know, not only do these GMO crops require more pesticides, which harm pollinators, some of these GMO crops are engineered to poison insects on contact. And what we're really witnessing today is the corporate consolidation of our food supply. So it is our belief that Los Angeles is taking a visionary role here and needs to show and continue that leadership on this issue to protect its residents, its urban farms, and to set an example, not only to the state, but, you know, to the rest of the country. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Teresa Brady?
Hi, I'm here to present the letter from the Angeles chapter of the Sierra Club. Hillary, it's already probably in the record, we emailed it in. But also, I wanted to make a couple of points that are from the Sierra Club biotech policy. One is that we ask for a, acts in accordance with the precautionary principle. And GMOs are not in accordance with the precautionary principle. They've been assumed to be substantially equivalent. And as a lot of people have been able to say, they're, they're not. They've been allowed to be exempted from the EPA and a lot of other federal agencies because of this, because they've been considered equivalent. And so the precautionary principle is not being acted on. We call for a moratorium on them because of the, on GMOs because of their unsafeness. Can I, can I?
Yeah, wrap it up in the next few seconds. Sure.
Antibiotic-resistant markers are in a lot of GMOs, and there's a lot of resistance to antibiotics that people are experiencing. And they could be tied to this, but we aren't even labeling them, so we don't know. So the use of them in our food supply is really dangerous. Also, there is a liability. There should be, the corporations that make these, these seeds should be liable when they, they reduce the saleable use of a crop to a farmer and when they cause human suffering and animal suffering. And we, we, the National Sierra Club also states, and I'm going to read this, "We support the right of states and localities to adopt regulations for genetically-engineered organisms more stringent than federal regulations." Just wanted to make sure I am.
There's a lot to choose from there. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brady. And Mr. Bruce Campbell?
Good day, Chair O'Farrell and Mr. Corretz. So crops are genetically modified to achieve a trait, occasionally two traits. Trait number one, herbicide tolerance or herbicide resistance. And I hear that's 80 to 85% of global genetically-modified crop acreage, so it can spray virtually unlimited amount of generally, generally it's been the broad spectrum herbicide, mostly Monsanto's Roundup. However, they're moving into Agent Orange Component 24D mixed with Roundup, as well as Agent Orange Component 24D, necessarily with dioxin contaminant mixed with another herbicide. And the second main trait is insecticidal bacteria in every cell. And the Bacillus thurigensis, I first heard about it when there was a gypsy moth problem in oak trees in Santa Barbara. And the natural BT you could spray on, it biodegrades in sunlight in three days, and you can rinse it off if you're consuming the product. However, if it's in every cell, it's only going into the consumer rather than being able to be washed off or biodegrade. Third main trait is a mixture of herbicide resistance and insecticidal bacteria in every cell. And there was state legislation with, and the best part was taken out in the Ag Committee, and it would have held patent holder, mostly Monsanto and Dow AgroSciences, liable for genetic contamination, which is permanent. However, the ag, ag industry was too powerful in Sacramento, and that didn't become law. So we need locales like Mendocino, Trinity, Marin, Santa Cruz, City of Arcata, and City of L.A. to take the lead. Please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Thank you. That concludes the public comment section for item three. And just, this GMO-free zone will protect the quality of the food, increasing numbers of people growing it in their homes, schools, and communities. And again, let me just commend my colleague, Paul Corretz, for all of his great efforts And Paul, I'm glad you're here, because if you weren't, I'd be alone up here. So thank you.
Always happy to keep you company.
Thank you. Mr. Labonge had to leave for another engagement. But, so this will move to the full City Council with instruction from the chair for full approval for consideration of the new ordinance. So with that, we'll move on. And I want to thank everyone for taking time out of your day to come in and testify. Thank you so much for that.
Councilman O'Farrell, just wanted to mention that this item is scheduled for City Council tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow. Tomorrow it shall be on the full council agenda. So we'll see you in chambers, many of you. Thank you. All right. With that, we will now go to item four.
Item number four is motion Corretz, Labonge, O'Farrell, relative to instructing the Department of Recreation and Parks and any other relevant city departments to report in 30 days on the policies and procedures that dictate the use of poisons to control the rodent population in the parks and hillside areas of Los Angeles, including the Santa Monica Mountains, Hollywood Hills, and Griffith Park. This item is continued from the April 28, 2014 Arts Meeting.
Thank you, Richard. And we have with us for information and presentation, we have Richard Sikorski. Sikolski? Sikolski, Deputy Agriculture Commissioner for L.A. County. We also have Marty Friedman, Pest Management with Recreation and Parks, Los Angeles. And then Laura Baurenfield, Feen, Fine, did I say that right?
You did.
It's Fine, right?
Yeah.
With grounds maintenance supervisor with the Los Angeles Recreation and Parks Department.
Thank you for having us back. Recreation and Parks has conducted a comprehensive review of its IPM program specific to the use of rodenticides. This review's included consulting with Los Angeles County Department of Agriculture and other local agencies. As per committee request and based on this review, we have concluded that we are unable to discontinue the use of all rodenticides in our parks, both developed and undeveloped. We are confident that we're using pesticides only as a measure of last resort and in an environmentally sensitive and appropriate manner. To date in 2014, we have avoided the use of rodenticides at 37 parks by using glueboards for rat and mice control, thereby limiting the use of rodenticides for interior rodents to only 19 locations. To keep our applications in perspective, to date during 2014, we have only used first-generation anticoagulant rodenticides for ground squirrel control at 15 parks, which is equivalent to only 3% of our total number of facilities. In an effort to be both progressive and responsive, we are phasing out the use of all second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides at all facilities. Second-generation anticoagulant baits will be replaced with less acutely toxic rodenticides. Additionally, we have begun installing subterranean ground squirrel bait stations to further minimize potential off-target exposure in parks where this is both practical and feasible. Due to the sheer vastness of our operations and considering our primary obligation to maintain safe and healthy parks, we are likewise unable to eliminate the use of rodenticides in our undeveloped urban wilderness areas. These open spaces are frequented by the public and are adjacent to developed and heavily-used formal areas of our parks. Because we are compelled to limit public exposure to the health risks posed by uncontrolled rodent populations, we will need to continue to have the ability to utilize rodenticides when appropriate. In order for our pest control operations to be effective, we need to retain the ability to thoughtfully and responsibly utilize our IPM program, including the use of rodenticides when conditions warrant their use. Any local restrictions above and beyond those set forth for enforcement by the State of California effective July 1, 2014, could threaten public safety. I also have a letter that I'd like to maybe summarize from Joe Ramirez. Joe Ramirez is, I want to get his title correct. Vector Management Program, Vector Born Disease Surveillance Unit for L.A. County Department of Public Health. "I want to commend you and your crew for the excellent work in managing the ground squirrel problem at Rose Hills Park. I inspected the park on the 29th of August and spoke with 11 patrons, including one with a leash dog. They were all concerned with the damage caused by the ground squirrel infestation and grateful the city resolved the problems in their park. Our primary public health concern regarding ground squirrels and their fleas is the role they can play in the amplification and transmission of the organism that causes plague. The risk factors associated with transmission increases in proportion to human activity and the ground squirrel population. This becomes especially relevant in areas of past positive plague activity, such as Griffith Park. Therefore, it is very important to have an ongoing rodent control program in order to reduce the risk of exposure to rodent-borne disease. Judicious use of first-generation anticoagulant rodenticides in conjunction with a robust integrated pest management program has been a useful tool in the management of rodent-borne disease. Managing rodents reduces the risk of exposure to rodent-borne disease and aids in complying with the Los Angeles County Health and Safety Codes related to rodent infestations. In 2006, there was a human case of plague in the city of Los Angeles, and the source of exposure was initially suspected to be Griffith Park, where the person had a history of visiting. Because there was an ongoing rodent control program at the park, the possibility of exposure at the park was reduced and ultimately ruled out by investigators. Please keep up the good work."
Gentlemen?
I'm here to answer any questions.
Answer questions?
And again, my name is Marty Friedman. I am the advisor for our department, Reckon Parks. I think if we can give you pictures of some of the products we have used in installing these subterranean bait stations. Instead of above-ground, they are now, it's like a valve box. All you're seeing is something like this cover with holes approximately two feet on the sides, which the rodent can enter, which really restricts off-target pests, especially children and people that are responsible enough to keep their pets on a leash.
Terrific. Thank you.
The only thing that we've had incidences where people were off-leash and scrupulously went through some effort to, to access our bait stations. So I think we go really over and above really labeling, and we follow labels to the letter of the law.
Terrific. So just to give some background, I think, for, for everyone who's here, many of whom may not have the full sort of evolution of all this, is that my colleague, Paul Corretz, along with Tom Labonge, who had to leave, introduced a motion, which I seconded, that calling- along with Tom Labancho had to leave, introduced a motion which I seconded that calling for the investigation of use of second generations, specifically second generation rodenticides, in relation to the very disturbing media account of P-22, the mountain lion that lives in Griffith Park and his poisoning through ingesting rodenticides. And when it was heard in my committee a couple of months back, I want to say maybe even three months ago or so, I requested reporting on the feasibility of eliminating all rodenticides, what that would look like across all park systems in Los Angeles. And Laura, you addressed that, I think, in your presentation. Two, ban all second generation rodenticides, Recreation and Parks only, which I understand from your report, they are being phased out or have been phased out entirely.
That is correct.
And then three, ban all rodenticides in regional parks and wildlife areas, so-called natural parks, while keeping first generation in urban parks and rec centers only. And you just reported that they're in 15, which is about 3% of our parks facilities.
That's correct.
Okay. And so, let's see, with that. Let's see. Let me ask you this. In terms of, you know, there's the state ban that was put in place, it went into effect in July. Do you see any use moving forward of new products that come on the market that are even more humane? As I mentioned it the last time, I really loathe the glue traps but understand also, unfortunately, that especially for Norway rats, from what staff has informed me of, that they're the most effective. If you could talk a little bit about other mitigation measures?
Primary for commensal rodents like rats and mice that get into our rec centers, the primary measure of control is exclusion and good sanitation. And that's always the first measure that we try and take care of, restricting pesticides as the absolute measure of last resort. Marty and his staff regularly attend seminars and symposiums where new products are discussed. Marty is frequently speaking with our vendors to find out what the latest and greatest least toxic products are that are available. We're actually getting ready to begin use of something called the Rat Zapper. It's a battery operated device that the rat or mice crawls into and I guess they're electrocuted when they hit the plate. It's very quick and humane.
It's so much better than a glue trap. So that's a good, that's a good new product that's being at least rolled out and experimented with?
We're trying to implement it in some of the rec centers, being more sensitive to children.
Terrific.
And off, the children won't see them out there.
Right.
They run on 4G batteries. So it might give somebody, haven't had anybody willing to test them yet in our crew.
Like a real human being?
I'm sure it's a little zap. It's like taking a nine volt and putting it on your tongue. I'm sure it's a little bit more than that.
I doubt you'll find any takers.
No. But I think we're trying to approach it in a humane way and always going above and exhausting. Like Laura says, we have, all, my crew have licenses. We go, it's 20 to 40 hours of units every two-year period to renew your license. So this encourages us to keep abreast of all the new changes in laws and regulations. And I think Mr. Sikolski contested that. I'm always asking him, how are we doing on this? I always want to be in compliance, this is our main goal, while attending, addressing and controlling problems.
Okay. I love the idea of the Rat Zapper.
Yeah, that's, we're going to try that, see how that goes. Hopefully they remain in facilities. We're trying to see how we can manage them better. But I think, you know, sanitation, as Laura brought up, is probably the biggest number one defense.
Yes.
On rodents, probably 80, 90%. And that's what we're instilling in our rec people because they happen to store a lot of clutter, either equipment, food products, through avenue of child daycares.
Sure.
There's a food source there.
Right.
So food, harborage, shelter, these are the ingredients that attract these vermin.
And so can you all go over the issue with, there are county and there's certainly state regulations with regard to rodenticides? I understand that some municipalities are actually out of compliance and choose to be so because they'll pay the fines because that's the price of doing business. We tend to comply because of, you know, we're a big city, a big municipality with lots of issues. Can you kind of address that?
Well, I think what you're saying is some, you know, they're willing to kick the can down the road. And I think maybe Richard can address how the city of Santa Monica has, is it Santa Monica or Malibu?
Well, it depends. Santa Monica's had its problems, Malibu's had its problems. But traditionally, the Palisades Park has been quite a big hub of ground squirrel problems there. The city's been ordered by public health to depopulate or to reduce the population. And the other factor they have there is the erosion on top of the bluff there has caused a tremendous amount of erosion damage right above Pacific, right above Pacific Coast Highway there. But as far as, the pesticides that are used in the state of California must be registered by the state of California, Cal EPA. So you have a registration process with US EPA. That doesn't mean that every pesticide that they register, California allow its use here. It goes through a registration process. There is no local ordinance that can preempt state law and you can't say, well, we're going to ban the use within our city limits. You can set a policy by your departments to do that. But again, the state of California Department of Pesticide Regulation, which is part of Cal EPA, they maintain that they have registered the products, they feel that they're safe for use. That's their opinion.
Use according to label, just like a medication that the doctor provides you. Take two pills three times a day. If you exceed it or change that, who's liable for that?
The federal label is law and it spells out how to use the material, the method and the manner, and that has to be followed. The site has to be on the label or the commodity, but not necessarily the pest, as long as it's not prohibitively expressed, do not treat, let's say for ants.
Right.
So the regulations that are adopted in California and the laws pertain mostly to worker's safety, public safety, environmental safety, and the manners that this material being used, they, depending on what the pesticide is, such as some of the soil fumigants, there are things in regulation as to how much water you have to put on top of it, what kind of seals so you don't have volatilization, you don't have people exposed to breathing toxic fumes coming out of the soil. But it all, it varies with pesticide itself. It starts with the label.
And the new state law that went into effect, which bans second generation rodenticides, it still allows them for pesticide companies for private use. Is that correct?
If I address that, what the state did is they made it a restricted use pesticide in California. You have federally restricted pesticides and you have California restricted pesticides. If it's only federally restricted, then the people applying them or supervising the use have to be a certified applicator, such as Mr. Friedman. They're certified by testing by the state of California and then they take their continuing education, laws and regs. I do seminars where I talk on laws and regs and hopefully educate them on what they should do and not do. And then with the state restricted materials, they require not only that they be applied or supervised by a certified applicator, licensed applicator, they also require a permit. And the permits are issued by the Ag Commissioner's Office after we review the use and the site. Now, that doesn't hold too for what we call non-agricultural sites, such as schools, residential, industrial sites, institutional sites. We don't have to evaluate that property. We can go ahead and just issue the permit. That's the way the state law is set up.
To use second or first generation?
No, for first generations, they're not, they're not restricted. Second generation became restricted July 1st. So structural licensed companies that are applying these rodenticides for commercial commensal rodents within 50 feet of a building are exempt from permits. Same company puts a tent on a house to fumigate it for termites, sulfuric fluoride, Vicang, there's several trade names, is a restricted use pesticide. They're not required to get a permit. Agricultural licensed companies are. And that's the difference. And in California, we've gone a little further in distinguishing what we call agricultural use. It's not just production of food or ornamental crops, it covers parks, cemeteries, golf courses, right of ways, these are all agricultural uses. And so a company that's doing work for hire has to be licensed in that category that covers that type of use by the State Department of Pesticide Regulation, as opposed to the Department of Consumer Affairs that licenses structural companies. They're not as complicated as far as what their use is. When you get into the ag use, it gets very complicated.
I'd like to address your compliance question.
Yes, please.
Ultimately, we're responsible for controlling ground squirrel populations. And ultimately, if we fail to control their populations, LA County Health can force us to close facilities until we've gotten the populations under control. As recent as last summer, LA County Health closed a campground for an extended period of time until the population was under control. So that is ultimately the compliance threat that we are living up against and trying to meet, to keep our facilities safe and open for the public's use.
So you're choosing not to get the permission to use the second generation? You're simply using first generation rodenticides?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's a policy decision, not a, you haven't been officially directed to by ordinance or by law. It's just simply a policy shift.
It's a policy shift in the Department of Recreation and Parks in response to the motion that was brought forth and in reviewing our IPM program. We're confident that we can move forward and keep our parks safe without the use of second generation anticoagulants.
And do you see that long-term?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Can you envision a scenario where you are 100% rodenticide-free, first or second generation?
That would be a wonderful time. I don't know if that time is coming anytime soon, but we are open to any and every possibility to avoid the use of rodenticides, absolutely.
I mentioned the introduction and encouragement of natural predators, right? Great horned owls, et cetera, that, you know, instill greater balance, even in our parks. Do you envision a future?
Well, there's still a lot of that predatory and some control. However, snakes, we've exhausted gopher snakes for gophers, key ridge and snake problem now, so one problem may cause another.
Right.
A lot of birds of prey only eat, I'm not sure what their diet is, but they're not that frequent. When a food source is not there, they go somewhere else. We've thought about putting barn owls and hawk stations and try to lure those natural predators, but we have a vast, Griffith Park alone, Chafford Park areas in the West Valley, those are just conducive for rodents.
Right.
You have all these hillsides, you have things unchecked other than natural predators. If we can reduce all pesticides or eliminate them, that would be a wonderful world, but I think that's unrealistic.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, I appreciate, I appreciate these reports. And what I'm going to recommend is that just we hold this in committee. And in a year from now, or less than a year from now, actually, July of 2015, the state law will have been in effect. You'll have been one year or so down the road of not using second generation rodenticides. I would love to see what it looks like in terms of quantifiable evidence of how it's helped or hindered, or I would love for you to report back on, you know, the outcomes of that, if you could think of how you could quantify progress.
I think the second generations are pretty much, I think those are out of the toolbox. We're able to use other tools, first generation.
So my question is, what kinds, what kind of evidence will we see next summer after the law's been in effect for one year?
We report regularly and monthly on our pesticide use and we also have a job order system that tracks all of the requests for pest control. So we should be able to quantify and come back and report next year on our progress.
Now, back to the Health Department. Again, we get, we don't look around for ground squirrel populations. We get that help from the Health Department. So they go somewhere and they see an overabundance of ground squirrels and potential plague or any other major problem that any congregation of large animals hunt the virus from the rats and things like this.
Right.
They give us suppression letters, give us, say, a month's time, say, we'll be back and we would like to see some suppression efforts. So that's, now we know kind of the problem areas, so we're pretty much proactive. And I just wish we had Joe Ramirez from the Health Department last month. He couldn't make this meeting, but if we have another meeting, I hope he can have a voice.
Yeah, we'll schedule, I want to keep this open. And what I'd also like, I don't know what I want to do with this yet, but we need to really work on just educating the general public, private property owners who live around our parks, because there's a good chance that P-22 was poisoned from a private residence as well, because they can still hire an exterminator and they can use second generation rodenticides. And that arguably is a larger problem. But what's really great is we're at least, we've at least imposed the policy for the city, which there was overwhelming evidence at the presentation last time.
Well, I think taking it out of homeowners' hands is a big step.
Yeah.
And it's still a leap, we don't want to get into that, but it's a big leap from a might that causes the mange.
Right.
You can make the argument that the weak immune system has been compromised from a bait situation.
Right, but at least it's off the counter now and...
Yes, but I think even the Fish and Wildlife biologists will have a reasonable argument on that. It's a pretty big leap, although it seems reasonable, but it is a big leap.
Wonderful.
Councilmember, we can also do a better job with putting some information on our website, discussing our integrated pest management program and the efforts that we're making in an effort to educate the public about the work they do or that we're doing and how they can also help support wildlife in the area. So we can, we can work on that.
I would love to see that. So, so we'll keep it open and then I would like you to come back in July of next year to, for a progress report and maybe some interesting things will be, you know, come to the, rise to the top that will inform us further on how to move forward with a, you know, a more sustainable, holistic rodenticide-free future in our parks.
Our whole goal is to make it a safe place for the public to come and enjoy the parks. That's what it was designed to do. We just get, certain areas have issues and we need to suppress populations. Our goal is not to eliminate, I think that's unrealistic, but just to keep it suppressed.
Terrific. Well, I want to thank you all for being proactive on this and doing such a great job. And the pictures, when P-22 was evaluated again, he looks better.
He does.
He matters to all of us. We, you know, he's kind of like, he's the conscience of our parks in a way. Yeah. So we hope he doesn't harm anyone. We hope that he stays safe and eventually he finds a mate and, you know, there you have it. So thank you so much. And what I'd like to do is offer the floor to my colleague again, Mr. Corretts.
Mr. Corretts, if I could just make one more comment here?
Yes.
As far as the amount of usage of that second generation pesticide, now that it requires a permit, they're not knocking down our doors to get permits because the use is primarily around structures. So this is your structural companies. We never saw a lot of use out where you would have harborage. And I think that's probably a lot of the problems that you have out there with the secondary poisoning is the homeowners. And now that this has been taken off the market, it really alleviates a lot of problems that we saw between homeowners taking matters in their own hand and coming up with things like antifreeze mixed with glass, ground beef and a little bit of strychnine. And then people's dogs wind up eating it and dying, so.
It's just inhumane.
It's a good thing that this is off the market as far as the availability to just the general public.
Right, whether it's a domestic animal or urban wildlife, it's just inhumane, period. So I'm really glad that it's off the market. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Corretts?
Yeah, I wonder if I could stay here. First of all, I wish I could bring P-22 here to testify for himself.
Us too.
I thought we might have some permitting problems as well as some language problems, but certainly he's the poster animal for this problem. We know there's an enormous problem with pesticides in wildlife. I know there's a US Park Service study that found that 92% of dead bobcats in the parks were, had rodenticides in their system. I think we're literally poisoning their food supply. And we're obviously not doing it intentionally, but we're doing almost as bad a job of that. The problem is that rodenticides are designed not to work very quickly, because I think the primary reason people in their homes don't use rat traps is they don't want to deal with the dead rats. So they're designed to give you the time for the rat to move on to somewhere else and be eaten by a predator. Well, that's the whole problem. We're killing off our wildlife, but we're also killing off predators that could solve the same problem that the pesticides are designed to resolve. So the question is, I mean, an owl can eat something like a thousand mice a year. So by killing off owls, we're obviously substituting in the pesticide for the prey. The question is, number one, the difference between first stage and second stage pesticides. Do the first stage pesticides also have that problem? Are they also eaten by wildlife and kill them off?
The second generation is usually a second, a single feed, which is more toxic than the first generation.
Right, so it's killing wildlife more often?
Sometimes they'll eat it enough to be bait shy, go into their burrows and maybe become, you know, just bait shy on that product. you know, just bait shy on that product. But the second generation, which I think was better in some aspects, if you look at the wildlife, there was a lot of studies done about, you know, what, if the rodent just freshly ate that bait, was consumed, you know, all this has to be in a relatively short period of time because they do break down, prevents the blood from clotting. That can take several days to longer. So a multi-feed, they would have to eat several feedings to get that same dosage in them. Now, you know, again, I'm not here to argue about the biology. I'm not a doctor or a vet.
And I don't know the biology. That's why I'm asking you.
But I had paperwork. I mean, it would have to eat quite a few of these animals to be detrimental. I think the testing is a lot more sensitive than it used to be. What, you know, you say 90-something percent, I heard 73% from Fish and Wildlife, but is it may, what, how much was that really the causal agent for death? You know, that's a logical conclusion, but really...
Well, 92% in the U.S. National Parks, that would be a pretty logical conclusion.
No, it's hard to argue those numbers. And I'm not pro-pest, however. I'm just into pro-use, I'm into using products enough to do the job. I don't, we've used glue boards, trapping, we're trying these zappers. The jury's out. You know, we talked to manufacturers. There hasn't been a product developed. There are some that are, strychnine has secondary issues. You know, the rodent was consumed strychnine, a hawk ate that, that would be affected. So these other baits aren't quite as toxic that way. So I wish there was a panacea product that wouldn't be detrimental to anything, but...
Why don't we just use simple traps more often? Or, as you said, the glue-based, not, less toxic.
And for rats and mice, that is our primary agent of control. However, in a place like Griffith Park or Elysian or Chatsworth, where you have thousands of acres of open park space, trapping is really not a feasible option to gain the kind of control we're obligated to get by LA County Health.
Or modifying habitat is pretty, not cost-effective, or pretty prohibitive.
Is it the cost that makes it prohibitive? Could we spend more, put more traps out in Griffith Park?
How would we remove every rock, nook and cranny? That would be a potential...
Glue boards are, glue boards are not something you would use for ground squirrel control. It would be some kind of like a have-a-heart above-ground trap. The squirrels would crawl into it, and then you'd be obligated to have staff handle the pests. It would require a permit from California Department of Fish and Wildlife to move them or to dispose of them. So there's, it's complicated. It's not, it's not that simple.
Even that, there's relocation laws that you cannot relocate once you catch. So you have to euthanize them on the spot. I reached out to Animal Regulations. Maybe they would aid in helping, giving the shot would be probably the best, quickest method. Drowning, there's a cage live trapping called a squirrelinator that catches multi-squirrels. I can imagine people seeing us with caged animals. You know, it's, it's a no-win thing for us, I believe.
Yeah. I mean, there's not a pleasant and easy answer, but it seems like if we're endangering our wildlife, we need to come up with something that's less toxic and...
We are...
We have to euthanize them. I think we're generally trying to avoid the unpleasantness of the job, just as the consumer is and doesn't want to have to use a rat trap and remove the rat themselves. I think we need to think in a different direction and be more willing to do the work-intensive, less pleasant step rather than endangering all of our wildlife and at the same time interfering with the natural process of predator control.
Let's see where the zapper traps go, because maybe there'll be an outside but protected application at some point for them. I just, I hate glue traps. I can't even tell you how much I hate them. They're so inhumane. The animal dies a horrible, slow death. They disembowel themselves. They squeak, and it's awful. But I understand that you have to, you know, comply and so on, you know. I encourage just those other more humane, you know, if it's a 4D battery, that sounds pretty good. And maybe someday there'll be a rodenticide-free application. You never know.
We always have our ear to the ground, and we are always open for suggestions. So it's an absolute open door, open policy to consider, you know, every possible measure of control, absolutely.
Well, I appreciate the first step that you all have taken without even waiting for this to work its way through the process. Hopefully, we can continue to move in a less toxic and more humane direction.
That is our hope as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And we have a lot of comment cards on this as well, and we'll just start with that. You all have been sitting very patiently. I appreciate that. We'll do the one minute again, and we're going to start with Catherine Louise, followed by Simone Reyes, followed by Janet Carper.
Thank you very much for allowing the public to weigh in on this, and I appreciate Paul Corretts actually came to Earth Day in Griffith Park last, this past year, and it was kind of very exciting to see him there. And I understand that the city wants to move, at least at the moment, toward using first-generation anticoagulants. But it was that first-generation anticoagulant that was responsible for the poisoning of P-22. And additionally, according to the study by researchers from UCLA and the National Park Service, 77% of bobcats in five counties have been affected by these first-generation rodenticides. That's huge. But here's the bottom line. Whatever the city decides today will have an impact on tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Reyes?
I'm Simone Reyes. I'm a longtime animal advocate. I have my own television show that highlighted a lot of animal rights issues called Running Russell Simmons. I recently traveled to Japan with Sea Shepherd to help stop the dolphin slaughters there, which we're still fighting against. And I cannot save animals in my own backyard. It is horrifying to see animals struggling, animals that are dead on the side of the road, and we highly suspect that it is because of the rat poison. I actually advocate on behalf of all life in suffering. We are all equal, even the rats. And so I would love it if we could, as a community and as a state, start to implement non-lethal ways of dealing with issues that seem to be a problem for some and have a healthy, strong ecosystem, which will put everything in balance. Because as the saying goes, and I have three seconds, so goes California, so goes the nation. Wouldn't it be amazing if California set a precedent that didn't just view some animals as pests and others as pets, but all life as something that needs to be respected and eventually taken care of by California? Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Janet Carper will be followed by Eric Barcalow, and then Laura Howe.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Janet Carper with CLAW. I think it's really synchronicitous that this hearing was preceded by the GMO hearing because we can, it really highlights the fact that everything is connected, and human beings have encountered this problem throughout time, that we cannot isolate something, try to manipulate something without affecting pretty much everything else. And I really commend the Department of Parks and Recs for the bold, sweeping gestures. I know it's very hard to change things, but it's wonderful how their ear is on the ground and they're open, and this is all tremendous and really a leading force. And I'm so happy to know that. And I just want to encourage to keep in mind the interconnectedness of everything, that even the first generations, however, do have impact, albeit slower than the second generation. And that we really, I mean, I know, it sounds like we're asking them to invent the better mousetrap. It's, you know, such a hard thing to do, but to please keep in mind about the fact that those animals, however, will still be in the food chain. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, gentlemen. I came with a prepared statement that I don't have with me right now, but it's coming. I do want to say a couple of things. Paul and Mitch, you were asking about rodenticides and Phase 1 and Phase 2. My understanding is that the Phase 2 stay in the body longer. So when a bobcat eats a rat that has that in them, it stays in their body for three to six months instead of a few days or a few weeks, whereas the Type 1s don't last that long in the system. And so it builds up over time in their systems, and that's one of the major issues. I am a docent at a feline conservation center, so the predators are kind of my thing. And we talked about earlier the GMOs, and we don't want to ingest those poisons into our systems. Well, the bobcats and the mountain lions and the raptors should have the same choice. And the only way we can do that is by eliminating it, not only in our parks, but the step that was taken by the state is a huge thing. The prepared statement I want to read real quick here is from the Bark Avenue Foundation and LA Animal Services New Hope Partner that spays and neuters 2,500 LA dogs and cats every year, as well as moving LA Animal Services dogs. They basically are saying it's just not enough. They've seen it. It happens. It's not just the rodents that die, it's the dogs and the cats and the, obviously, the other wildlife. So I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Thank you. And Laura Howe will be followed by Kathy Schumaker and Kelsey Everly.
Hi, I'm Laura Howe. I'm from Friends of Griffith Park, and I thank both of you. I especially thank Paul Corretts for speaking today. I think that there's so much on this issue, there's not even enough to tap into it. But to me, it seems like a lot of people are having trouble understanding the chemistry and the biology. We have biologists. There's like three different studies going on in Griffith Park right now about rodenticides. Why isn't there more communication between the city and these biologists? It's about, also about, and I appreciate the movements, I know that it's not easy. I really appreciate, I work with a lot of people in Park and Recs. I know their job is huge, but it's time to make changes. Changes, I mean, they're difficult. They're not, it's like, it's not the fun stuff of picking up the dead rats. It's about educating the public. It's about, and we, and that's the thing, I think the city has to set the precedent. They have to be the example. And if we're expecting the public, which is probably, you know, 80% to 90% of the problem, we have to lead the way as the city, because these chemicals still are going to be in the system of these animals. We want, we talk about, we preach this thing about wanting to have biodiversity, about ecosystems. If we're poisoning our wildlife, if we want wildlife, we can't poison it. And also, I just have a question in regards to the concessions in Griffith Park. I, as a runner, as a hiker, I see that there's all these concessions that are in the wilderness, and they have rat traps all around the Greek, the observatory, all the food stations. And I think there needs to just be better communication in terms of what and how much is being used. Thank you.
That's a good point. Thanks, Laura. Kathy Schumaker.
Hi, I'm Kathy Schumaker, and...
Sorry.
It's okay. And I'm an urban wildlife conservation specialist for the National Park Service, and I'd like to talk a little bit about the difasalon, which is part of the first-generation compounds, and how we have seen it in our bobcats. We've seen it in, over 40% of our bobcats tested livers after they've died. We've seen it in their blood system. Unfortunately, it doesn't stay in the liver, so we do miss a lot of it because it breaks down and doesn't have the same half-life that the second generation does, but it is out there. And specifically with P-1 or P-22, our Hollywood cat, and all the other mountain lions, we've had it in 50% of our mountain lions throughout the Santa Monica Mountains. That's just in the Santa Monica Mountains, not throughout the state. And with P-22, he was directly exposed to that as well, difasalon, and that's what we found in the blood for him. And I would just like the parks here to work with other, I know that Caneo Park and Recs, our Recreation and Park District, has been rodenticide-free for 10 years, and part of that is from the study that we have done. And I would urge you guys to communicate with them, see how they've done it. They have over 50 parks that are next to urban and open space areas. Thank you.
Thank you. We will follow up. Thank you for that. And Kelsey Everly will be followed by Heather Hyde and Teresa Brady.
Good afternoon. I'm Kelsey Everly, speaking today on behalf of the Animal Legal Defense Fund, which is a nonprofit organization representing 100,000 members that works to protect the lives and advance the interest of animals through the legal system. And we strongly support eliminating the use of all rodenticides, first and second generation, in the parks and wilderness areas of Los Angeles. These dangerous rodent poisons wreak havoc on our native ecosystems and indiscriminately kill thousands of bobcats, raptors, other mountain lions. And we applaud Recs and Parks' recent policy shift towards phasing out second generation, but we think there's more to be done. We think we should move towards eliminating all rodenticides. And as we just heard, there's no such thing as a safe poison for wildlife. There's no environmentally sensitive way of spreading poison in our, in our parks. And I'd also just echo your sentiment that the best conservation measure is coyotes and bobcats, they're the most effective controllers of squirrel and bird populations. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Heather?
Thank you again for your time. I wanted to address a couple of issues that I don't think that have been addressed, that I know are a problem with rodenticide as well in wildlife. Basically, like, as far as I know, my dogs, my dogs will pick up other animals' droppings. Sometimes on a daily basis, on a walk, I have to pull, like, feces from some other animal out of their mouth. They try to snatch it quick. That other animal could have been infected by rodenticide, and if my dog gets affected by that, that would be absolutely devastating. So I think the fact of the matter that you have to also consider, even cats, you know, I'm sure that they pick up these rodents that are infected by rodenticide. My dogs, you know, I'm an animal rights activist. I don't, I'm not for hunting, but my dogs don't know that. I can't tell them, "Don't kill that animal," you know? So my dogs at times have killed a bird, have had a possum in its mouth, you know? And if my loved one was affected by it, you know, it would be devastating. So that's something that I also think that, you know, I'd love it for you to consider that.
Thank you. Thank you. And Teresa Brady will be followed by Jeff, I think it's Gladys, and then Tony Tucci.
Just, I just wanted to present a letter from another organization that I'm involved with, and that's the Sepulveda Basin Wildlife Area Steering Committee. And we strongly support this effort to eliminate the anticoagulants, because we do agree that owls and bobcats can be effective in controlling rats in a park, and they are killed often by eating rats. One of our members, Deborah George, recommended that we get more owl boxes, and she actually wrote this letter, so I'll submit this. It's also in the record already, I think.
Thank you. Thank you. And Jeff, is it Gladys? Is it? Thank you.
Thank you for bringing us. My, obviously, my name's Jeff Gladys, pest control business, licensed with the State of California, LA-based. Initially, I did use first and second gen, and I haven't done it for seven years. We do, you know, from hotels to mainly residential homes. And I've had feedback from most of the people that we do work for, and they've said that they've actually seen gopher snakes come along. They've seen more owls and hawks come along, coyotes, you know? And this is proof in the pudding when they're telling me this. So, you know, I completely agree with integrated pest management, you know, sanitizing, exclusion. I'd also agree with the rat zappers. Those are brilliant. That's mainly what we use. Glue boards are hideous, as you were mentioning.
Yes.
So, you know, I think that if the integrated pest management, you know, was, you know, stuck to, yeah, it is legwork, but at the same time, that will give, you know, the birds of prey and such a little chance to catch up and start doing their job naturally. So...
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
I want to get your card before you go.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Tony will be followed by Keon Schulman, Schulman, sorry, and Skip Haynes.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name's Tony Tucci. I am a director of CLAW or Citizens for Los Angeles Wildlife, and I'd really like to thank you. I'd really like to thank Rec and Parks and say my, how far we've come since the last meeting, the last committee meeting here in April. The awareness has, in fact, said that we are phasing out and that out of the toolbox is second-generation rodenticide. However, I'd like to respectfully ask that you do not hold that particular item, that you actually memorialize it, that you actually get it in writing. Please move to draft ordinance, make it policy, be it an understood policy on all lease agreements, concession agreements, request for... concession agreements, request for proposals, be sure that every exterminator or rodent control company that subcontracts with Rec and Parks or renters and vendors of Rec and Parks understand that we prohibit the application of second-generation anticoagulant rodenticide in all areas of L.A. City Park properties. Wanted to mention that the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, it is their written policy for nine years, 100% rodenticide-free. I'm going to share their action with you guys.
Thanks, Tony, and just for the record, I'm keeping the file open, I'm not noting and filing it, so it goes away, I'm keeping it open so that we can explore, you know.
What I'm asking you is, if second generation specifically, if you're not using it, let's get it in writing today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're here. Keon?
Schulman.
Schulman, thank you.
Yes, hello. Good afternoon, I'm Keon Schulman with Poison Free Malibu, and we strongly support policy against the use of rodent poisons by the City of Los Angeles, and encourage the committee to take strong action mandating that all anticoagulant poisons not be used by the Recreation and Parks Department here. Difasenone is a highly toxic to humans and other mammals by inhalation, dermal absorption, and ingestion. The National Park Service has identified difasenone, the first-generation anticoagulant that you're using, as the poison that killed, that is affecting P-22. Los Angeles scientist, Los Angeles Laurel Searls, has found difasenone, the first generation that you're using, was the cause of 77% of poisoned bobcats in a five-county Southern California study by UCLA and National Park Services. A study by the EPA study determines that difasenone is hazardous to mammals and predators and scavengers. 58% were affected by this. The California Coastal Commission passed the Santa Monica Local Coastal Plan that all first and second-generation anticoagulants were banned as of October 10th, including the clause, "All anticoagulants shall be prohibited." Seven cities now include resolutions that oppose all anticoagulant poisons, including difasenone. Difasenone use is entirely inappropriate where wildlife has access. There are various facilities that have done no poisons, such as Marin County, please look up them. City of Malibu has not used any poisons on their property. Trapping is the way to go. If we don't trap, we're just, we are discarding these toxic wastes into our neighbors' property. It is polluting the environment and the food chain with the poison. So we are not, we're turning the other way, we're polluting the environment, and we're poisoning the food chain. So we hope that you can please avoid this over-pollution of our environment, trapping is the superior strategy, and has been successful in many programs throughout California. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schulman, thank you. Skip will be followed by Allison Sumard, and then Andrew Douglas, I'm sorry, Doyle's.
Gentlemen, I'd just like to say, I'm really glad to see you here, because if you weren't here, the animals would have no protection. I'm kind of appalled that the rest of the committee members aren't here. But that said, you've done a really great job in getting Recs and Parks to stop using second generation, to get the city to move on anything, it's absolutely amazing, and we
I have to thank my staff, Skip, they
Yeah, they did a great job, they did a really, really good job.
Really on it, so I thank my staff.
As you know, I'm with CLAW. I'm with CLAW, and I would just like to say, CLAW actually, starting today, has instituted a barn owl box program. We will provide barn owl boxes for anyone who wants them, providing we get the donations to cover it, because each box costs about $200. And our requirement for putting a barn owl box on your property is, you have to go around to at least 20 of your neighbors and introduce yourself, and introduce their new neighbor, the barn owl, and ask your neighbors to stop using rodenticides. So it's really an anti-rodenticide problem. We just put it up on our website, we're going to continue doing it. We also have an idea, we'd like to work with the city on a campaign to clean up the city, because bottom line, 50 to 60% of rodent problems are caused by sloppy food, you know, and so forth. That also brings coyotes and the other animals in. So we would like to talk to the city about starting a campaign to do it. And once again, we'd just like to thank you guys for what you've done, because this is monumental. This is going to go out all over the country as soon as we get out of here. There are people all over the country waiting to hear about this, that the City of Los Angeles has actually made movement. So thank you very much, and thank you to the staff who's ever here.
Yes, Christine and David and Starr have really been
Councilmember Corretts's office as well, staff.
Well, it goes without saying.
And staff.
You got it, okay, thank you. Ally?
Allison Sumard, Citizens for Los Angeles Wildlife. You know, it's been a year since we started talking with your offices about the dangers of rodenticide. In that time, then it uncovered that P-22 was sick. P-22 has been given vitamin K and is clotted and is out there, but we are terrified that it's going to happen again. We're terrified that, you know, there were dogs that were accidentally poisoned, there's cats, there's scores of anonymous animals that are not as famous as P-22 that are dying every day, it's raining raptors in the canyons, we are hearing reports of this. And while we are thrilled about this new step-by-rap to get rid of second generation, that's a huge step, but as many have mentioned, difasenone, which is the active ingredient in squirrel bait, is still extremely toxic, and we really do need to look at that. And you can see, you know, we have 2,500 signatures in the file, we have all of these groups, including National Park Service and Center of Biological Research, and Rodents Are the Solutions, and Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and Poison Free Malibu, and Defenders of Wildlife, and Sepulveda Basin Steering, all of these groups, and many I haven't mentioned, that are here to celebrate the end of second-generation rodenticide in our parks and our wilderness areas, and really encourage, you know, that we find a way around first generation, there's no good reason. And the other thing is that we keep talking about the fear of disease, Haunta virus doesn't come from squirrels, so why are we bringing that up anymore? The bubonic plague is treated with a round of antibiotics, so this is not, it's not, you talked about the 21st century thinking, we need to compare that with our fears that we're spreading from the health department. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks Allison. And Andrew.
Thanks again for this opportunity. Biodiversity Day indeed. My hat's off to the Rec and Parks Department and the Ag Commissioner, they do really great work, and I appreciate their forward-thinking progress on this. However, I also felt somewhat disconcerted when, to hear that there wasn't more of a open arms approach to reaching out to the nonprofit sector. There are easily, at least a dozen different nonprofits that do integrated pest management by reintroducing predatory species, red-tailed hawks, peregrines, owls were mentioned, but like, I've seen them in action, because I've done a lot of work growing food on the West L.A. VA campus, which is a very similar environment, where you have different levels of species. A little known fact is that on the California flag, there are all these black things underneath the bear where the bear is walking, and it's presumed that it's actually the bear paw prints, but they're not. There's actually many more of those spots on the flag than there are bear legs, and it's because they actually are gophers, and that's how long gophers have been here, they've been here for millions of years, they'll be here long after we're gone, sides are just going to make them procreate more often. And then since the plague was mentioned, there's a growing consensus that actually it was the decimation of the predatory species of cats that actually allowed the rats to proliferate, and it was out of an institutionalized, preconceived notion that people were going after cats at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. And that concludes public comment on item four, and as I mentioned, I will keep the file open, and we'll have reports back on progress, new methods to control pests, and then we'll get, oh, there's another speaker on this item? Okay, oh Miguel, my apologies, I didn't see your card, but come on up and please give your last name, Miguel. Oh, you know what, I have you on general comments, that's why.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's all right, Miguel Ordanya. Ordanyana. Yeah, so, okay, so, item four, you got it.
Okay.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you. I'm an urban carnivore biologist, and I'm also a longtime resident of the Griffith Park neighborhood area, and I'm coming here to basically, another suggestion to not include first-generation rat poison into your integrated pest management. We've heard a lot of evidence today that it's possible to be without all rodenticide poison, and I was fortunate enough to be able to document P-22 with another team of biologists, and also look at his improvement with camera traps in the park that we do research with. And looking at his improvement, it gives us hope, obviously, and that's great, but I also have footage of him eating raccoons opportunistically, which is another reminder that he is always going to be vulnerable to rat poison, as well as other wildlife. And even though he does look a little bit better, it doesn't mean that he's out of the woods, and without more communication between pest managers and the local community, the golf course, the L.A. Zoo, vendors throughout the park, this is never going to go away, because a cultural shift needs to happen, and it's not just enough for some, a small bit of policy to change. So I hope you look, have a lot more forward-thinking, and hopefully the pest managers of the city are less reactionary and more forward-thinking when they kind of develop their new strategy moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel. All right, that does conclude public comment on item four, so we're going to keep the file open, and we will have reports back from Rec and Parks County, whomever we need to on this item moving forward, as we make our way to a more humane city process for dealing with animals that challenge us. So thank you so much, everyone, for being here today. And before we close the meeting, we have one general comment card, and that is from my friend Laura Gutierrez.
Good afternoon, Mitch.
Good afternoon.
And Councilmember Corretts. My name is Laura Gutierrez, and I'm a longtime resident of Los Angeles. 16 years ago, I had a stroke, and for 14 years since, I've had no health insurance. I was able to get by with clinics and purchasing my medications, and hoped to God that I didn't have another recurring stroke. Because of the implementation of the ACA Act, I was able to get insurance. Because I hadn't been working, I was taking care of my mother, I qualified for Medicare. I have worked with county in the past, I'm also a retired registered nurse, and I can tell you right now that when the petitions went around from AHF, having the city take over its own health department, I gladly signed it. There are major problems with the county. I mean, I'm hearing that these people are having problems with the public health department in county right now with the pesticides. There are issues, health issues, that women and children and elderly and disabled people are having right now, and I can't see how the L.A. Health City Commission is not being implemented. I know you have to dot your i's and cross your t's with the city government and so forth, but, you know, there needs to be some kind of movement to go forward. This is the second year that ACA is going to be in implementation. I myself, right now, I am looking at purchasing my insurance with my own salary again, because now I'm able to, because I can get insurance with a predisposing disease, but many people are not, and they're having some issues, and I think, if anything, you need to urge the city, you need to urge the city attorney's office, the, I believe it's the CAO?
CAO.
Right. Because this really needs to be implemented, and I'm not here for AHF, I'm here for myself as a county patient. I just lost two and a half hours of my time today just trying to get a doctor change, and I got nowhere.
Thank you, Laura, and just so you know, the city health commission is agendized for next Monday in this committee. So it's on, it'll be on the agenda for next Monday.
I appreciate it.
Yes, you bet.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not a member of this committee, but I will say, from everything I've heard, it seems like we're pretty close to getting this implemented.
Yeah, so we'll have a report from the city attorney's office and CAO next Monday, right where you're sitting.
Thank you. I'll be out of town, but
But we'll report back.
Yeah, well, no, I'm sure we'll have people here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and that adjourns this meeting, thank you.